Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees Special Meeting to Order this Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Cheryl, would you call the roll please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Chriswell. Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Vice Chair Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs-Andrea.
Here.
Thank you. For this afternoon's special meeting agenda, we have two executive sessions. At this time, I would call for a motion to begin the first, uh, to recess to executives, excuse me, to recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with possible action to follow. An open session for a twenty-minute duration. Open session will take place in the upper jewel lounge and in the virtual meeting room.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Those in person will be given time to relocate to the special meeting room. Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone. Do we have a motion to return to open session, please?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time I would call for a motion to offer employment to the President for a term of three years, commencing July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028, as discussed in executive session. And I will, sorry, I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries. Thank you. This time I call for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. The board will have a three-minute break before we begin the regular meeting. All right, Randy, I'm ready when you are, sir. Good evening. I'd like to call this... Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Trustees meeting to order this Tuesday, March 18, 2025. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Scruggs Andre.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now read the KCKCC mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community, one student at a time. Cheryl, would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Criswell.
Here.
Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskins Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Vice Chair Ricketts. Vice Chair Ricketts. Trustee Scruggs Andreu.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd call for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Audience to Patrons and Petitioners. This time, I'd invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addresses must state their name and address for the record before making their comment or question. There is a three-minute time limit. Do we have any in the chat?
There's no one in the chat.
Seeing none approaching the podium, we will move to the next item on the agenda.
They weren't sure what you were talking about.
Oh. Looks like we do have one approaching the podium.
Yes, my name is Scott Harding, and I'm Wyandotte County resident. And I'm wondering, you guys can do this behind back doors about all these pensions and wage increases and stuff like that. I thought this was supposed to be an open meeting, and I thought in Kansas law, you had to have seven days in advance notice. And another thing, you guys are revenue neutral. How can you add any more cost and justify it when it's revenue neutral? I think you guys already got a problem with that revenue neutral already. I want to see... I'm going to ask for some records under the Open Records Act. I want to know what kind of raises people are going to get. I want to know what the spending is. Each individual, if there's any kind of credit cards or anything like that, I'd like to get it on a flash drive. And it seems like there's a lot of stuff going on behind back doors, and it needs to come out and be transparent. Everybody says transparent. Nothing's transparent in Wyandotte County. You guys are here to save us money. How many one of you guys have saved this place, or this Kansas City, Kansas taxpayers any money? Let's say it's the last 10 years. Some of you guys might not have been in there 10 years. But can anybody tell me that? Can you answer that? Anybody? Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just like, nope, Tim Lewis, Wyandotte County resident, lifelong. Kind of just same thing as he did. I'd like to know what have you guys done, any cuts that are made, buildings are sold, whatever, to save the taxpayers' money? I've heard that KCKCC takes over half of the revenue that Wyandotte County brings in for taxes. Where's that money going? You know, I mean, that, I mean, you know, where have you guys, what cuts have you guys made? Heard now that we're wanting to give raises and stuff. I haven't had a raise. I haven't had a cost of living raise. I think I was here before about how I'm getting ready to lose my house because my tax bill a month is more than my house payment. I've already argued that. I'm on my way to Topeka with, with... That's wrong. There's people that are losing their houses. You know, a raise is not worth people losing their houses on. You all need to start looking at where, where can we make cuts? Where can we make cuts? Have anybody, Mr. Ash, have you, have you made any suggestions on where we can make cuts to save the taxpayers' money? Each of, every one of you guys. I'm asking you that. Give me a nod. Give me a sentence. Have we made, have we made any progress in the last year to save the taxpayers' money? You all are staring at me with a blank face. Give me a yes, give me a no, give me something. Give me something that I can go home on that we're making progress to save my house. If you all ain't noticed, we ain't going nowhere. We're going to start being at these meetings. We're going to start looking into this further on where this money's being taken, what, what, what legally we can do. And I ask you guys, you know, if this has already been approved, that was wrong. It should have been held right here to where we have a voice. Where's that money going to come from? Can, can we ask, can I ask that? Where's that money, can somebody answer me that? Where's this money going to come from? Can you answer me, please? So nobody up on the board will answer a question to the taxpayers?
The money always comes from the taxes, right?
What's that? I'm sorry?
I said the money always comes from the taxes.
Exactly, ma'am. Exactly. You're, we're taxed out. You know, enough's enough. You guys heard it over and over. Enough's enough. So how are you going to pay this? So you're going to ask for more money from the taxpayers? Here's my proposal. Here's what I'd like to put on record. The community college, we should start looking to sell now. It is no longer a benefit to this community. It is a burden to this community.
Time limit.
Are you all going to do that? Are you all going to start saving us money and, and get it off, get it off the taxpayers' books? Personally, myself, I don't think you all even have a right to ask for taxpayers' money. You can go to the UG and get what you get.
Sir, we're at time limit. Thank you.
There's nobody else coming up, sir.
We're, we're at time limit. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you both for coming and speaking to us. We do hear you.
Obviously, don't, ma'am.
I do. Well, I do.
I, I, I understand you do. I do appreciate that.
Sir, if you'd please take your seat.
No, I'm not, sir. I want to, you answer me. Where are you going to save the money?
Sir, please take your seat so we can continue this business meeting. Looks like we have no other speakers this evening. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Would be recognitions and presentations, for which there are none scheduled this evening. We would move to then the Board Committee Reports. Invite each Board Committee to report, beginning with the Board Finance Committee with trustee Chriswell.
Sorry about that. I had a bit of technical difficulty. So sorry. Okay, well, thank you so much for your time. This is, the following is my report. The Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board Finance Committee met last on March 10. And we, of course, spoke to the, we, of course, approved the, excuse me. Excuse me, consent agenda for the Board of Trustees meeting. And those would have been items B and C. We discussed the financial summary and the board reports. Dr. Schulte was so kind enough to, to articulate that and give us accurate information. The one thing that I will say is that the college does continue to effectively manage the resource, the financial resources that it has. There was also a downtown progress update on the construction of the project, you know, for the downtown campus. And then finally, we wrapped up with the FY 2026 funding summary. That was also provided by both Dr. Moser as well as, excuse me, Mr., Dr. Schulte. One thing I just want to add, and Dr. Schulte is going to get into this in his financial report, but it's important to have an understanding of, you know, spending. And we want to make sure that folks are clear on what has occurred between FY 2024, what occurred in 2025. And I think he also has some information on what's expected in 2026, FY 2026. But just an interesting thing. We spent about approximately $5 million more in FY 2025, but our cash balances are still about $1 million of where we were in FY 2024. Also, you know, in the last few cycles, budget cycles, it's important to, to point out that we reduced by about four mil. So that's about, let's say about a $10 million reduction in what we could have collected tax money. And I wanted to make sure that folks are aware of that. You know, if you look at what KCKCC is doing, and then you look at the other taxing entities at the, at the, in the county, it's very apparent that KCKCC has reduced. And I can't speak for the other taxing entities, and I want to make sure that folks understand that it isn't just KCKCC that is receiving tax dollars. So I would invite, you know, anyone to take a look at those numbers, look at last year's numbers, and just make sure that they're clear on, you know, who got what funding-wise from, from the county. Because I think it paints a picture that will help to clarify some of the questions that are out there in regards to KCKCC. So with that, that ends my report. Thank you for your time, and I will hand it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Chriswell. Questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Board Policy Committee with trustee Hoskins Sutton.
Yes, Chair, we will have some policies to be approved a little bit later, and we do have an amendment in addition to one of the policies that we will talk about later. The one on conflict, conflict of interest. We do have a statement we're going to add to that one.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have the Board Community Engagement Committee with vice chair Ricketts.
Okay, evening, everyone. I'm so sorry that I can't be on camera, but it's taking away too much Wi-Fi where we are. We did have our community engagement meeting about a week ago. Just getting very excited, we will have our second community engagement with our community members coming up in April, and that will be an in-person meeting. And that is where we are going to have a great opportunity to hear the voice of some of our community members. Those that are excited to be advocates for KCKCC, hear all of the great work that we've done. One of, actually several of our community members at the previous meeting had asked us to consider and look at recruiting a couple of, you know, previous graduates of KCKCC. And we have a few that we are going to be reaching out to to see if they will be able to join us. It is always awesome to hear the great work that is going on at the college, the benefit that our students are receiving. And I know from years of being on the foundation board, we would hear all of the fabulous stories from our students of such great diverse backgrounds and majors and interests. And it's, it's just phenomenal, the work that we're doing. So it's going to be exciting to have those voices come to the table and to also share with us, you know, concerns that they're hearing in the community, things that we could share with staff and faculty, you know, and our leadership, to see if there are areas that we can work on and improve, just to make our community college even better. So we look forward to that. That is coming up in April, and it will be exciting to see the work that we'll be doing. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ricketts, any questions or comments from the board?
I was excited to be able to join the, the last kickoff meeting with the group, so looking forward to seeing how that develops and getting feedback from the community. And also, you know, having some ambassadors out there that can help share our story and our truth, hopefully, and just making more citizens aware of the work that we're doing and the impact that we're making. So thank you, Vice Chair Ricketts, for your work on that.
I agree.
We'll call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the ACCT and KACC delegates' report, and trustee Ash?
Yes, thank you, Chair Isnard. The, the big issue is the state funding. Of course, legislators in session, they're working various bills and proposals and so forth. Our, our association is very actively engaged. Our presidents are very actively engaged with the executive director in attending the various committee meetings, requests for information from the Board of Regents, requests for information from legislators. And so the, the work continues during, you know, as the legislature meets. Budget committee is, is looking at a, at a bill. And when we had the weekly president's meeting on Friday, there was great discussion about that bill and what was being proposed. And there's a lot of disagreement at the state, you know, about what should be in it and what shouldn't be in it. Our position was, we were recommending the bill as it was initially presented be accepted without any additions, amendments, or provisos, you know, attached to it, which several legislators were trying to do. Now, I did not hear anything yesterday or today. So, Dr. Moser, if you have more current information, I'd appreciate it if you would share it. Okay.
I'll have more in the president's report.
Okay.
The House Bill, Sub Bill 2007 was supposed to be discussed today. I don't know if it made it to discussion because some of the sessions are running long. But as soon as I know from there, I'll, I'll pass that along. But I have some other information as well.
We're getting deep into March, and it's, you know, it's chaotic, and it's a scramble. As, as the saying goes in Topeka, nothing's dead until signed die session, which is, is still a ways out. So we are, we are advocating strongly for our position in order to not lose critical funding for our programming. So that's where we stand right now. The next event, as most of you have been aware, communication from Cheryl, is the PTK recognition in Topeka next month. And so be sure that if you have not responded to Cheryl on that email, that you do so with your intention to attend or not because they're getting to a point where they need to cut off and put final numbers in for the, for the luncheon and so on and so forth. But we always have incredible students that receive the recognition up there. And, you know, what they're doing, representing themselves and their families in our college, our community is, you know, just always exceptional. And so if you can attend it, I'm sure you will agree. And that's really all I have at this point.
Thank you, trustee Ash. Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we'll keep you posted as updates come out from, from Heather Morgan or anywhere. We would be sure and pass those along to you so you can stay up with them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That motion carried. We are now ready for the consent agenda. This time, I'd invite any questions or comments. And if there are none, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And we are ready for the reports, portion of the agenda, beginning with the Student Senate Report. Mr. Joseph Sanchez, Student Senate President.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, Student Senate, as of right now, we are doing our, we are doing Orange Juice Glad on, you got to engage on Tuesday and Wednesday. We're doing two night, Tuesday morning and Wednesday night. We're passing out orange juice. Wednesday night, we're passing out orange juice and pop tarts. And the Student Senate has their Senate for next year picked out, so elections will start after spring break, and we have something planned at the end of the year, at the end of the year bash. It's called Blue Devil Games, more will come soon, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any questions, comments from the board?
I do. Mr. Sanchez, this is Trustee Ricketts, and again, I apologize for my being on camera. But do you mind, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but could you share a little bit about what your experience has been since you've been on the Senate? What has that been like for you, and how's that helped you grow as a leader?
It's been helping me grow a lot. There's stuff that I have learned throughout the Senate, and it really helped me become more of a leader to my Senate, because they are seeing me as now doing good. That's all I have right now, but it's really been amazing.
Thank you. So if you had it to do all over again, would you still do?
Yes, I would.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your hard work.
Just a comment, we appreciate you being here on spring break, and enjoy the rest of your spring break along with the other students.
Thank you, I will.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So move.
Move approval of report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now for the president's report with Dr. Moser.
Great, thank you, Chair Asnar. Randy, would you share my screen, please, hardwired? Yes. I can, it'd take me a moment, but share some information here. I'll need to open up Zoom and get that loaded. I can share that way. Give me one second. Okay, there we go. All right, should be sharing now. Very good, awesome, thank you so much. So really, I thought it was a great opportunity to share some accurate details related to the mill levy. So when you look at a dollar of taxes in Wyandotte County, and where do those tax dollars go? KC KCC is 16 cents on the dollar. There's a lot of misperception out there that we're high on taxes. We're actually the lowest taxing entity in the county. So it doesn't matter which school district, your area of the county that you're in, KC KCC is 16 cents out of every dollar on your taxes. So it works out to about, I think it's 14 cents a mill. I have some of those calculations in another area, but I'll save that for now. But it's more than just a tax. What, okay, Randy. So it's more than just paying a tax. Investing in education has been proven in multiple decades that it is the greatest impact on socioeconomic progress for any community in the world. In 2022, we did an economic impact study of the dollars collected and spent by KC KCC, and what is the return? So in that year, we had a budget of approximately $100 million, and with that, our alumni impact alone is $693.7 million. That's just the return in FY, or, yeah, in year 2022. So that's the equivalent of hosting 107 World Series. It supports this, the alumni, 10,516 jobs. When you look at the total impact, that $100 million returned to our community, it's $764.9 million. I'd say that's a pretty healthy return for just one year. That is the equivalent of supporting 11,633 jobs. The student impact is tremendous as well. So if we look at the return on the dollar, so for every dollar that was spent by KC KCC in 2022, the students gained $12.80 in lifetime earnings. The taxpayer return is $1.50. So the annual stock market return over the course of 30 years is about 9.6%. So this is five times a greater return than the stock market. And when you look at the society gains for every dollar spent, so reductions in public services, et cetera, it's $8.20. So as there are questions about the impact of KC KCC and how we give back to the community, this helps tell that story in accurate numbers. In the last two years, last year, we went revenue neutral, as Trustee Criswell mentioned. It's equivalent of about four mills, and each mill is about $2.3 million. So she stated that's about $10 million. The year before that, we cut one mill from what we could have collected, so that is another $2.3 million. So in the last two years, we have reduced the tax burden on what KC KCC could have collected by $14 million. So we continue to give back to the community what we're not needing as far as operating a successful college. In the last six years, we did a capital campaign to add educational services and healthcare services and others downtown, where the educational attainment of the population is much lower than west of 635. In those six years, we have raised through a capital campaign over $60 million. That's over $45 million of other people's money. That means that's $45 million somewhat in the, back in the pockets of Wyandotte County taxpayers. So, and when we opened up that site downtown, the community impact, if we look at the, how much the Wyandotte County taxpayers are paying for that, it's about 18 cents on the dollar. 18 cents on the dollar for 100,000 square foot educational facility that trains individuals and educates individuals to advance to four-year institutions, and we offer, and we will offer downtown, commercial construction technology and automation engineering technology. In automation engineering currently through the FAME program, our students are paid while they go to school. They're paid a minimum of 28 hours from their sponsor company. Their sponsor company pays for their tuition and fees, pays for their materials, and they make, as they go through the program, starting around $50,000 to $60,000 a year. And by the time they graduate, prior to graduation, they're on average making around $80,000 a year. So KC KCC creates taxpayers. We are currently in a program with Panasonic Energy Corporation of North America to train up to 200, and I think we'll train over 200, industrial maintenance technology techs. It's an eight-week program. Panasonic is paying for the faculty, so that is saving the taxpayers money, because we don't have to pay the faculty. Those students make, as they start the program, it's an eight-week program, and they make $50,000 to $55,000 a year while they're in the program. When they graduate from that program, they'll go from a Tier One to a Tier Three tech, and they'll make over $60,000 a year with an eight-week program. We had a student who graduated in the FAME program, the two-year program, making over $100,000 a year. So the return on investment for what KC KCC does is significant, and it's overlooked. So we will be, so we will be, we will continue to tell this story, and that way it'll be helpful and educational for individuals who are on the receiving end of that. So hopefully, that provides a little insight, and we'll continue to share this information. Some of the other items, as Trustee Ash was mentioning, we have been working with the legislature in Topeka this last couple weeks. I was down there last Monday to speak with the different legislators. There's several bills that are out there. Some of them, anything, we're already looking at a $7 million cut to community and technical colleges across the state. That's about 4.2% of the state rev, or budget for community and technical colleges. Depending on the different bills that are out there, there could be another 15 or 20 million that was put up in the House bill proposal. Senate Ways and Means is looking to put that 15 or 20 million back and only do the $7 million reduction if there was another bill that passed. But if that other bill didn't pass, the catch was, community and technical colleges would get $0 from the state, zero. So that definitely is not in the best interest of KC KCC, the community, or the state of Kansas. So we've been advocating for that, that we would support the Senate budget bill sub for HB 2007, only if the money would remain unchanged from the Senate Ways and Means position, with no other floor amendments made and no other cuts to community and technical colleges. Community and technical colleges are the economic engine of our state. As we look and attract businesses from other states across the country, you know, we're bringing billions and billions of dollars into our communities. This year, Wyandotte County alone will bring in more than $1 billion in capital investment. Panasonic Energy is now a $5 billion investment just to our south. They need 650 IMTs and AETs on an ongoing basis, and each one of those is going to make between 60 and $100,000 a year. So not everyone, but some of those will be living in Wyandotte County, and those individuals, not only will they be pulling themselves out of poverty in many instances, they will also be contributing to the tax base, which the percentage of taxpayers in Wyandotte County is low, which is why the tax rate is high. So as we create more taxpayers, then that helps decrease the burden on the other individuals currently paying taxes. So we continue to advocate for community colleges and their funding mechanisms that are out there. As we look through and things that were done just this last year of that, we've raised $60 million. You know, in the last year alone, we received $3 million in a HUD grant. We received over, almost $2.1 million in additional federal appropriations, $3 million from philanthropic organizations, $600,000 in new award money from NSF and National Institute of Health, $600,000 from the Department of Education, $500,000 from the Kaufman Foundation, and many other areas. So every dollar that we bring in other people's money saves Wyandotte County taxpayers money. So we will continue that wonderful initiative for our community as well. Other bills that are, okay, Randy, you can, no, you're, I'm sorry, you're good, you're already off. Other bills that are being looked at in the state right now, House Bill 2396 is one that eliminates the revenue neutral process, because there's a lot of misconceptions with that. But it also would create a property tax fund limit in cases of, if there was a successful protest petition. So if a taxing entity were to tax over what they received the previous year, it would be available for a vote in the community, and if a certain percentage of the community voted down that tax increase, then they would go back to their last year's tax increase. There's, there were several other items in there as well, but that is one that is being considered. It also creates a fund of Astra that would be divided up among the state, $60 million annually, breakdown of 65% on their population and 35% on county assessed evaluations. So we're keeping a keen eye on all of that. There's another bill that we advocated for, Dr. Bone in Allied Health, and her staff were critical in helping to support the bill. The bill is to change the educational requirements for nurse educators from a required master's degree to a bachelor's degree. We have a significant shortage of healthcare workers in the state and in the country. That's known, and it's just, it's almost impossible to get filled, especially if you're in a rural area. So by allowing the nurse educators to teach if they have a bachelor's degree for an ADN program, would provide more opportunities for faculty so that we could get more nurses into the pipeline. So those are kind of some of the big items on the federal level. We are beginning our budget process now. We are thinking that we'll have Mr. Willett at the Board Finance Committee in April, and then my first presentation to the board, preliminary budget presentation will be at the April meeting as well, so lots of work going into that. And for those in the college, we'll be reaching out to you, Dr. Schulte's office, to start collecting information on needs for next year. Some kudos, our men's basketball team won their first game for the national tournament, which is exciting. They're playing right now, I don't know if anyone has a score, but hopefully, they're still winning. No, oh, okay, hopefully, they'll come back and win. Our ladies softball started off great this season, and our debate team, we have a nationally recognized debate team, and they took fifth in the nation in the national debate tournament. They were the number one community college in the nation. So competition is fierce at KC KCC, we're doing incredible things, we're saving the county money, we're creating taxpayers, and we are just generating successful pathways for individuals that right now don't have that available to them. So that concludes my report. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moser. Any comments or questions from the board?
Dr. Moser, this might be addressed to you or Trustee Ash, but the legislature, they usually go into what they call a first adjournment or something like that, and it's usually in March, and then they come back in late April. So are they, they're still officially in session right now, or are they?
Yes, sir, until Friday, I believe. They're trying to get budget and everything done by Thursday, but then they will go on break after that and then come back for signing day.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Trustee Ricketts, if I may, probably more of a comment than anything, because I know- I know when we first started, the conversations of building the downtown campus, and, you know, as you so gracefully put it, and how much of other people's money we have received for that. As, as a community member, and, you know, as an original doc, one of the things that has made me very excited is that there were other people at other entities and organizations that were open and willing to invest in Wyandotte County, let alone in KCK and downtown KCK. So, kudos to you, and I know you're not doing it all by yourself, but kudos to you and the entire team.
Thank you.
That has worked so hard, all that, and I know Mary Spangler has played a great role, and she's not the only one, but it has been a lot of work. You know, I've been able to listen in on some of those conversations, so great work. Looking forward to more, more of that to come. Thank you.
Thank you. We are passionate about what we do.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ricketts, and I just want to add that, to thank a few of our biggest supporters for this as well. I mean, the philanthropic organizations are one thing, and we so appreciate their generous donations towards this. The Sunderland Foundation alone was, what, fifteen, thirteen million at this point towards the project. But I know that issues tend to take political sides, and one thing that's really unique about this college, the work that we're doing, this project, is that we are completely bipartisan in our support for this. Our biggest supporters on the national level, Senator Jerry Moran, Republican, Senator Roger Marshall, Republican, former Representative Jake La Turner, Republican, Representative Sharice Davids, Democrat. They see the value in the work that we're doing, the economic development, return on investment that we are bringing back to this community. They understand that impact, and they want to do what they can to support it. That's why I support this program, because it takes more than just one person, more than just this board, it takes the community getting together to rally behind something that is going to make us better than we were before.
Move approval of the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Executive Vice President's Report with Dr. Baylog. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Isnard, and that was eloquently stated. We are the most efficient education provider in our area. Frankly, community colleges, as a sector, we are the most efficient education provider in our country, and the work that we're doing downtown is transformative, not just from the economic development impact, the largest economic development project in downtown KCK's history. But when you think about moving our in-demand programs there, the impact that it will have in moving people out of generational poverty, people, when you look at the population in that area, generally, low education attainment, low social outcomes, high unemployment, high underemployment, we're taking our most in-demand programs, helping people to prepare for in-demand jobs that will move their families out of generational poverty, overcoming barriers to accessing quality health care, childcare, transportation. It is, it is compelling work, it is life-changing work, and I'm proud and honored to be able to contribute to it. So, thank you for your work, Chair Isnard, to the trustees, and to my colleagues. For me, it's a great opportunity to brief the board on our work in institutional strategy, partnerships, and community engagement, and operational execution. As it relates to institutional strategy, in early March, we officially announced our migration to Illusian colleague SASS in this room, with a college-wide kickoff sponsored by our partners at Illusian. KC KCC executives were joined by representatives from Illusian to announce our partnership in modernizing our technology system and our strategy. This transition represents a major step forward in modernizing our administrative and student services infrastructure, allowing for improved efficiency, better data integration, and enhanced user experiences. The move to cloud-based services ensures long-term sustainability and adaptability in our digital transformation strategy. Related to partnerships and community engagement, in addition to our work with Illusian, we are engaging other technology companies whose solutions can augment our system upgrade and enable the college to pursue its strategic interests. One of those interests includes moving to a more skills-based approach to credentialing. Our conversations with companies like Astrum U and Territorium put us on the forefront nationally among our peers, focusing on competency and skill-based credentialing. A real product of this work in focusing on a skills-based approach is giving agency to learners and career seekers that are pursuing jobs, carrying with them their skills that they've attained through their experiences, through, you know, their learning here at the college and through other providers, but that it accurately represents and reflects the skills that they possess, giving them more marketability in the workforce. It's compelling work. Locally, this past month, we also continued meeting with area employers, engaging chambers of commerce and economic development organizations to support the business community. I thank many of you that joined us for those meetings and for those events. Thank you for taking your time to be there and representing the college, representing our employees and students. We're also pursuing meaningful education partnerships with organizations like Real World Learning, Kaufman Foundation, National Math and Science Initiative, and Junior Achievement of Greater Kansas City, that would help us expand our capacity as a college to support the needs of our students and area youth. Finally, as it relates to operational execution, our shift now is, or our focus, rather, shifting to closing the current academic and fiscal years and preparing for next year. Planning is underway for commencement in May, again, to be held at Children's Mercy Park, and across the college, as you heard from President Mosher, we're building our departmental and division budgets and considering strategic initiatives. This leads up to our preparation for our college budget for fiscal year '26. Thank you for your time, for the opportunity, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Baylog. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Academic Affairs Report with Mr. Jerry Pope. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of things from the report. I always like to report large participation rates, so I don't know if you noticed, but ninety-five percent of the faculty participated in the most recent assessment assignment. Usually, if you get eighty percent, you're really happy, so we're ecstatic about ninety-five percent. We're reaching out to those five percent, because we'd love to have a hundred. And speaking of a hundred percent, Chris Green let me know that a hundred percent of the faculty that have programs participated in the survey to, to include, it's a survey about the information they want on the website. So, a hundred percent of our programs participated in submitting their information to update their website, and again, that's really, that's a really good number, and I think Chris told me she'd never had a hundred percent from faculty, so we're really, we're really happy about that. KC KCC's top jazz vocal ensemble, student jazz vocal ensemble, is called The Standard. There's a couple of things that you see that they did this past month, but one of the things that they did locally was they opened at the Folly Theater for a group called Sage, which Sage is four women, they're, they won back-to-back Grammys, and actually, they're the first to all-woman ensemble, so it's, it's just the four singers, and they arrange their own songs, they write their own songs, they produce everything to win a Grammy. So, our students opened for them at the Folly Theater, and the feedback that I heard was that when people heard them, they thought, well, how's this group, how's this professional group going to follow them, because our students were so good? And I have to say, in the crowd, and I know Dr. Reobey was there, and in that crowd, they were so excited to hear our students, and it was just our students, they were singing, we had some graduates that were performing in the band, so it wasn't all current students, but the majority of them were, and everybody that was performing were students of Kansas, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, either current students or graduates. And of course, the Grammy Award-winning group did follow them well, because they are a highly professional group of women, and they sing beautifully, but our students sounded just absolutely fantastic in that venue, so I was, as a former music department member, I'm in awe of what they're doing in that department. And we'll have more information to share in the near future about that department, so. Our culinary arts students, and I always like to highlight what the students are doing, they did win a gold medal at the annual high school culinary competition that was held at Johnson County Community College, so congratulations to those students and their instructors. The HVAC program actually had an interviewing job fair over at the Technical Education Center. Eight students received job offers that night, and so we expect more of those students to receive job offers in the very near future, and as of now, they may have, but that's what I had at the time. Something that happened, I reported it in, the sentence was April of 2024, and I did have to go back and say, okay, what am I reading? But the students from Mike Rollins Multimedia and Video Production took a field trip to the Black Archives of Mid-America, where they collaborated with a PBS producer, and so the reason I'm reporting it now, or the reason they reported it now, is because that show is streaming now on PBS. So, we did some work, the students did some work in April of 2024, and about a year later, that show, and it talks about who it's about in the text in this report, but just really wonderful things for those students to be able to participate and see their work come to life in that PBS documentary. Congratulations to Darren Young, who is now Dr. Darren Young. He's in the Physical Therapist Assistant Program, he's a faculty, and you can see the title of his dissertation there, so congratulations to him. Karen Gaines, our business, one of our business professors, her students are working with a local company to help them with their, their media presence. I took a tour or was up in, at Pioneer Career Center earlier sometime, I don't remember when it was, but the HVAC program that's there, the electrical program, and the construction technology program are actually collaborating, and if you've been to that space, there's a gym that the construction area is using, and so what they're doing now is building a tiny house. We're not going to sell that house, but it's a tiny house, and it gives them the opportunity to build the house, you know, to do the HVAC in the house and also to do the electrical. And so, the students were really excited about that. I know the instructor there was excited about it, and that was kind of a brainchild among the instructors and the dean, Donald Smith, so it's just a, it's kind of a fun thing for them. So, that's probably all. I know I'm missing some things, but those are the things that are kind of highlighted in this report, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Not a question, but just a comment. I wanted to recognize, you'd mentioned the culinary program, winning gold. I love, time after time, seeing that we're winning gold and beating Johnson County, so it's always good news, and, and I missed my opportunity to recognize the debate team. Number five nationally is, is really impressive, so congratulations to them again.
Yes, absolutely, and I did mention it, because I heard Dr. Mosher, but I just will say that the two teams they beat, or the two teams that beat them are the teams that won. So, they were the teams that were in the final, and William Jewell, just across the river, is the one who won.
I appreciate your sharing the employment of the students. I think you said it was eight students?
Yes, eight students that night.
That's wonderful. The other thing is about the tiny houses, I know a lot of people are opposed to the tiny houses, however, with the homeless being as they are, and people who are sleeping in their cars because, because they can't afford housing, I think, and, and more, more entrepreneurs getting into constructing small houses, I think that's a way to go, that's the future.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think Musk, okay, I think Musk has a tiny house that is seven thousand dollars, I think, or something like that, and it can haul in the back of his truck, you know, his Tesla truck. And I think some communities are building areas where you can sit those tiny houses, and others are like letting them come into the trailer courts. So, I think that's, that's very interesting that you are being innovative with that.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Just a real quick comment, couple of things. I heard that Turner in Wyandotte County is one of the areas where they're allowing tiny houses, and then also some of those prefabricated houses, and, and just, if, if anyone knows, I got carried, so I went and looked them up, they sell the houses actually on Amazon of all places, and I'm sure they sell them on, you know, other places, but, you know, just FYI, interesting, but great work, Mr. Pope.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pope, this is Trustee Ricketts. I just want to ditto, ditto, great work, congratulations to you and the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Report, and I see Dr. Cordy approaching the podium. Good evening.
Thank you. Good news from a number of different fronts, this is just, just phenomenal. Our, as Dr. Mosher mentioned, our men's basketball team, they're in the national competition in Danville, and throughout the meeting, the athletic director who's there has been texting me back and forth. We won last night, unfortunately, we lost tonight to Kirkwood, seventy-four to fifty-six. We are still ranked fourteenth, and tomorrow night, we play Johnson County, and so that should be an interesting, interesting game there. We've had, three of our teams have been in national competition this year, and it's very unusual, and especially despite the fact that we've had the Fieldhouse offline, and so they've had to, to practice off-site, but they're, they're very exciting to be involved in national competition, like I said, three teams this year, and that's not been the case in recent history at KC KCC. Our enrollment numbers, as you see, are still very strong in the report, and, you know, we're looking now for the fall semester, and those numbers look very good, too, in terms of application, and you'll be getting some of the new numbers in the next report we're switching over, but right now, we've got the latest eight-week term, and all indicators point to very positive results in, in terms of our, our enrollments, so that's, that's a very good, very good indicator. Also, we're looking at different strategies. As, as you folks know, you know, we have Centennial Hall, which is our housing facility, they're looking at what they can do in the summertime to fill some of those empty beds with different, different camps, whether it's music or sports camps. Also, it was mentioned about our career services, our job fairs. We have a very high demand now from employers to be involved in the career fairs like we have with the HVAC, in that it's basically like speed dating, they go from table to table, you know, different students looking at different companies, and so we're, we're looking at trying to expand that, because it's, it's very beneficial for our students that they're able to meet with the employers. The employers love it, because they don't have to bring in, you know, student after student that's in the same facility, and they can interview, you know, twenty, thirty students in one shot compared to coming them into their offices or businesses. So, we're trying to establish more of those career fairs like that, based on different, different majors going on. And so, that's, those are the highlights I have, I don't want to take my own five minutes, but those are the great things that, that we have going on here at KC KCC. It's a great time to be here. I know I'm just temp guy, but it's a great time, and I can't take credit for a lot of this, because so much of this is just the entire teams, whether it's in, in Student Affairs, Enrollment Management, or Academic Affairs, other divisions, everybody's just pulled together to, to make it a very positive experience for our students here.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy. Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Dr. Cordy. Next, we have the Vice President of Finance and Operations Report with Dr. Schulte. Good evening.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. I just want to dovetail on Chair Chris Wells' conversation around Finance Committee. On Tuesday, we, again, a month ago, we talked about our mid-year budget review and continued to assess that we are on track in relation to looking at 6.4 million dollars in reductions over the previous year, based on our mill rate levy being revenue-neutral. We continue to hold that and continue to do a good financial management as an institution in relation to those reductions. I also shared at that time in conversation, as President Mosher and I have been involved, and Trustee Ash, with the state budget position, some information that we needed to pull forward and have as a conversation at Finance Committee, and I did note there that the mill rate levy that we have this year is the lowest since 2013. So, when assessing that in relation to where to where we've been, that's the lowest since 2013. And really, one of the key factors in that, in dollars coming to us, is the assessed property value. That's gone up over 100% in that time as well. So while it is, we're looking at and holding firm in relation to where we are, the assessed property value is a key piece of that. So we continue to monitor that, but made sure that we were in line with those reductions that were proposed way back when budget was approved by all of you previously, to make sure we're moving that forward. Inside of the business office, I wanted to share tonight that we were, we are excited to announce Rebecca Becky Barger as the new controller at KCKCC. She will begin Friday, April 18. Becky brings over a decade of experience in K-12 education, mostly serving as the Director of Accounting for the Bonner Springs Edwardville School District. Prior to beginning her career in education, she was the Office Manager at Barger Chiropractic for 15 years. She held leadership roles focused on process improvement, benchmarking, and competitive intelligence. Her experience with the school district will allow her to hit the ground running in relation to what we're doing and looking at our finances as a whole. She holds a bachelor's degree in management and human resources, and I do want to highlight, she is a KCKCC Blue Devil. She earned her associate's degree in accounting from us as well. So that speaks well to what we're producing and what we're doing here and moving that forward. As President Moser noted, as did Executive Vice President Baylog, budget documents have been sent out and received, and we continue to move through the board-approved budget timeline to make sure that we're mindful of getting information in front of the Finance Committee and U.S. Trustees for the next fiscal year budget. In addition, in Business Office, our RFP, Request for Proposal Responses, for onsite food service options have been received, and reviews by the Food Service Committee began on March 14, and we continue to have that conversation as we look at bringing food service onto campus once again. In the area of Human Resources, the team is actively recruiting and soliciting employment applications for the Vice President of Enrollment Management and Student Services, as well as the Director of Student Engagement. In Information Services, progress continues, as was noted by Executive Vice President Baylog, with the Illusion Team in preparation for the upcoming move of colleague to SaaS, Software as a Service in the cloud. We are currently on Week 22 of an 85-week trajectory. So we continue to move in that, that direction, and our CIO, Bob Walker, gives updates on a weekly basis in relation to what's being done, as a core team is working on assessing that as we move in that direction, and laying out project management to make sure we're successful in that 85-week period. One of the pieces is setting standard operating procedures and utilizing an RFP to go out to get a vendor to allow us to assist colleague utilization as a whole. One of the pieces is, we have it as an ERP, but are we using it comprehensively, and how do we set up standard operating procedures to make sure that we are using it comprehensively. In Facility Services, outdoor water fountain adjacent to Mary Ann Flunder Lodge by the lake was installed. Backstop repair and assembly to batting cages at the Blue Devil softball field was completed. In College Police, a new hire, Nzinga Ibobo, graduated from the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center in Hutchinson on February 28, so we're excited about that. And Officer Brandon Husky participated in the Ninth Annual United States Marshal Service Fallen Heroes Honor Run on March 7. In the area of Wellness Center on Campus, the Wellness and Fitness Center Chair Yoga Class participated and proudly wearing T-shirts designed by one of our KCKCC's own graphic design student here on campus. And I want to give one last piece, as I have a little bit of time left, is I want to tell you that, as Tom noted, that our Blue Devils play Johnson County, I think he said tomorrow night. Two weeks ago on Saturday, we won the Region Six Championship. After we had lost to Johnson County twice throughout the year, we played them at home, and we won the Region Six Championship against Johnson County. So if you can, send up a little prayer, a little excitement for them, because it'll be a battle when they play next, and I'm excited to watch that, that game as well. So if there are any questions about my report, I will entertain them now.
I'd just like to comment that Becky Barger and I pursued our bachelor's degrees together in that MHR program at Mid-America.
Excellent.
Back in the day, and she is, she's an A-team player. So
Excellent.
I congratulate you on a good hire there.
Thank you. She definitely stood apart, and we are excited to have her join us.
All right. Hearing no other comments or questions, we have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Educational Innovation and Global Programming Report with Dr. Ryobi. Good evening.
Good evening. Great to see everyone. Happy belated St. Patrick's Day. I had green on yesterday, but rocking pink today because we're celebrating International Women's Month all month. Happy to report on educational innovation and global programming. That consists of the five departments of Adult and Continuing Education, High School Partnerships, International Scholars, Online Education Services, and Workforce Innovation. Focusing on enrollment, we are excited to see that High School Partnership is steady, with about 27% of our student enrollment coming from our dual-concurrent programming. We have a 74 increase of international students on campus. That's currently 87 new students here. And our GED enrollments are at a whopping 65. So we're pushing it, and we're pushing it, and we're getting great results. Good job, team. As we move on to student success and focusing on our strategic initiatives, we've been really intentional with having a lot of career tables focusing on career and technical education at our high schools, particularly in Bay Star Linwood, where we had 40 students engaged and actually start a process where they were giving their interest about what programs they would want to attend here at KCKCC. Our AET program, led by Career and Technical Education and Workforce Innovation, had an open house where 106 families were there. Trustee Don was there, and it was an exciting time, great energy, and had some good pizza. We also had 10 students complete a part of the GED assessment. One of those students successfully completed the entire GED, so we're really excited about what's next for them. And we've supported about 35 new students with the international visa process. Our online education team is continuing supporting either Zoom calls or different virtual calls. So good job, Susan. I know you're on the line. As we move on to quality programs and employee engagement, as we expand our high school partnership initiatives, we recently joined the National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships that focuses on how community colleges work with their local high schools. We're working very closely with the Levinworth School District and pushing our agenda of how do we help them with their task of having their students graduate not only with a high school credential, but with a college credential, or at least a market skill credential within their time of graduation. With that, we are kick-forwarding our initiatives around short-term stackable credentials, with our first stackable credential in networking in Cisco was recently launched. And we are continuing to expand with our student success and student support services by implementing the initial, the Illusion Student Experience. And I just want to say a shout out to IT for giving us a lot of support as we map out some of our new technology. Great. Going on to community engagement and strategic priorities. KCKCC sponsored 10 students with scholarships with the BizFest Network. Now, the BizFest is an initiative that focuses on business education and entrepreneurship, and that has been a longstanding relationship that we've had. But I think this is the first time we've actually sponsored 10 students with scholarships. So that relationship is expanding. We're working with the Overland Chamber of Commerce to identify what skills we can either help them promote or amplify based on their business partners and their needs. In addition to that, we hosted and participated with the Fairfax Industrial Association, their annual meeting about just the economic development in the area, and we're looking also to help them support any skills and competencies that they're looking to give within that network. KCKCC was also a sponsor and a partner and celebrated Black History Month with the UG this past February. And we are leading with impact. I invite all of you to attend two upcoming events happening here. On April 3, Kansas City Kansas Community College, for the first time, is actually hosting the Kansas International Educators Regional Conference, where our very own Dr. Candace Scott is the chairperson of that consortium. And that's April 3, so please join us. And we're hosting our second annual Women in STEM Symposium on April 7. Thank you all, and if you have any questions or celebrations, I take them all.
Thank you. Any questions?
Dr. Ryobi. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryobi. This is Trustee Ricketts. You know what? I loved hearing about the dual enrollment for the high school students. And I know some students that took advantage of that. I would love if sometime in the future, we could hear some of their stories and how important it was for them to be able to, to be at KCKCC while they were in high school, and what that would mean for them.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image Report with Ms. Chris Green.
Hello.
Tonight, we're going to talk about good news in some of the programs. As you read through the board report and have looked at the president's report over the last couple of months, you may have noticed that KCKCC is making an impact in news circles, having articles written about the way that we're doing programs and the way that we are funding education. And tonight, I want to share one of those local stories from KSHB to start with. Randy?
A new Panasonic plant in DeSoto is expected to open soon. It's opening up thousands of jobs, too, and bringing big change to the community, especially the roads and traffic.
We have a team dedicated every Thursday to covering the DeSoto community and how this new plant is powering change. Part of the change is bringing in new job training to the area.
KSHB 41's Elise Shonig talked with some students already learning those skills. We're continuing to tell you stories on Panasonic and DeSoto, whose impact is spanning across colleges in the Kansas City area. But if you take a look at students in this field, they're already powering change of their own.
They all should be ready, just go and, to the one that you programmed and get them running.
This is what a typical day in the lab looks and sounds like for students like Grant Johnson.
And it'll sort and organize and load boxes on a pallet, all automatically.
Grant is part of KCK Community College's Advanced Manufacturing Program. They call it Fame. He was already working at Amsted Rail before deciding to go back to school.
I feel like there's a lot higher of a ceiling of, you know, my opportunities and room for growth now.
I think now other people are realizing, oh, you know, what's, what's happening in Kansas City?
Program Coordinator and Instructor Chuck Saunders says Panasonic is the new kid on the block here. KCK Community College has been training some of Panasonic's employees since August. Saunders says this is just the beginning.
Once it gets rolling, it's gonna, it's gonna pick up speed and be hard to stop.
The college is also teaching its current students to learn the ropes for potential future careers at Panasonic, Garmin, and other big local names.
And once they have that baseline knowledge, they can go anywhere and have skills that are applicable to the plate, to the building they just walked into.
Lily Navarro splits her week between learning in the classroom and her manufacturing job at Catalent in Kansas City.
I apply everything that I learn here, there, and vice versa.
And before Grant enrolled here.
Oh, no, no, no. I didn't know anything.
Which is why he knows Panasonic or not.
Be thrown anywhere, basically, and succeed.
They're forging their own paths inside these walls. In KCK, Elise Shonig, KSHB 41 News.
So that is a wonderful story. It's 2 minutes and 21 seconds, which you cannot ever pay for that kind of advertising, because it's just not as authentic. This reporter also came back and reported live from the Fame Open House and did a second story on the Fame Open House and shared that opportunity with the community as well. So exciting things are always happening at KCKCC, but even more so, we're seeing the recognition for that work and seeing how being a game changer in the way that we provide education is important. In addition to that, I can say that the website redesign is going really well. Jerry shared the exciting news. I have done three massive website redesigns in my 20-year career, and I have never had 100% faculty participation. So thank you to all of those faculty who took time to put those program pages together, who listened to the students, who said the thing they wanted most on the website was a program page for each page. And the videos that we show you, that's where they'll live on those program pages, as well as salary, what can I do, why should I pick this degree? So we're really excited about that and have started writing those. I'm also excited to share with you that we are fully staffed. We hired a content writer, as well as a multimedia designer, and that fills our team. And it's a great team to have, working together to bring everything to fruition. In addition to that, we, I helped facilitate the Community Engagement Board Committee this month, and I worked a lot this month with the Illusion Experience Launch and Illusion Communication to get that project up and running so that we can automate and make our processes more efficient here at the college. The last thing I want to talk about is the Spring Eight Week Campaign. So when we get back from spring break, second eight-week spring courses start, we did launch that campaign with digital ads, with postcards, and all other kinds of things. And then we are moving fast towards the launch of our, April 1, when you can enroll in both fall and summer courses, and launching that campaign as well, really focusing in on enrollment management. Probably next month, I will be able to come back to you with that ROI report that I share each semester, as we have gotten reports back from both our partner from Onward, and that's that online portal we have that helps students understand our enrollment process, as well as our digital advertising. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Hearing no comments or questions, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the unfinished business portion of our agenda this evening, beginning with the approval of the updated fiscal year 2025 Board of Trustees Goals. We had discussed this last in our previous Saturday meeting, and a draft had been sent to the board for your review ahead of time. So hopefully, everyone had a chance to look at that and see the changes that we had discussed. This time, I would open it for any discussion or a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item of unfinished business is the approval of the calendar year 2025 President's Goals. Again, these would have been made available to you both before our Saturday meeting and with any changes from Dr. Moser recently. So hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review those. If there is any discussion, I'd open it for that at this time, or a motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's a tremendous amount of work, and I'd just like to comment, appreciate all the effort, you know, by everybody to, particularly the president, but certainly submitting, but everybody in reviewing and commenting and, and all of that. And just congratulations to everybody.
Yes, great collaboration. Thank you. Moving into new business, I would ask Trustee Hoskin Sutton to report on the policies that are up for approval this evening.
Thank you, Chair. If you look, we have three. And the first one that's in our packet is web content and editing. Are there any questions or concerns about this particular one? I just have a correction. At the very bottom, it, Board Approved 3/16/2021, and under that, it says Revision Approved. And I think for consistency throughout, it needs to say, like the others say, needs to say Board Update. Is that what we're saying here? We need to change that from Revision to Board Updated, and then put that on there instead of Revision Approved. Arang, do you see what I'm talking about? Yes. Okay. So we can be consistent throughout. Lorraine, do you see what I'm talking about? Yes. Okay, so we can be consistent throughout.
Trying to scroll down to that one and see if I understand what you're meaning.
Yes.
You're just saying the revised date at the end, just a...
Yes, it's saying "Revision Approved", and really, let's make it say "Board Updated" the rest, the way the rest of the policies are saying, for consistency. Because at some point, someone would say, well, why do you have "Revision Approved" when the others say "Board Updated"?
Sure, that makes sense to me now. Thank you.
Okay. And are there any other concerns about that one? And then the, the next one is conflict of interest. And then there's a form that's with that. But I want to address that, this one, because, and when I said there's a, like something I want added, because on this particular policy, when it was first approved by the board on 4/21/2020, it included the trustees. And that information is taken out because ours is separate. But if we don't refer to it, to where that information is housed, then it looks like we are holding the employees to a conflict of interest, but not ourselves. So what I think should be added, and our HR person, Lorraine Mixon Page, got this statement together, it would say, "Members of the Board of Trustees are also subject to guidelines related to conflict of interest as outlined in the Board, Board of Trustees Handbook." And I'm thinking it should go under the "Purpose" statement, but if there's something different where you think it should go. But I think if, if we're taking, if the mention of the Board of Trustees is taken out of this conflict of interest policy, and we don't refer to it being anywhere else, then there's a great, that could be a great big misunderstanding that we are not holding ourselves accountable. And I think if you just, you can kill things, if you just, you can kill some of the misconception and all that if you just do things to cover it to begin with. So is there any concerns or do you understand, am I making this clear where, why I think this should be in here? Because the first policy, as I said, it mentioned the Board of Trustees, and now we're taking it out. And if there's no mention anywhere, then it really looks like, oh, we're saying, okay, employees have to sign something of conflict for interest, but they took the trustees out, and we're just doing whatever. So that's my reason for that.
This question might be for Dr. Moser then, because I'm, I don't know if it's my memory failing me or if I just didn't understand them, but I don't recall that we were pulled out of the policy as part of the change, and if we were, I mean, I know that as part of our board handbook and procedures, we sign a trustee conflict of interest disclosure as policing ourselves, but I didn't know that we weren't part of the group policy, so...
Yes, in here, it says administrators, the way it was written, administrators of Kansas City Kansas Community College is Board of Trustees, and then it goes on to name everyone else. You know, it's subject to complete this form. But the strikeout is to take the trustees off of it. So it's just taken us out of this because this is wanting to be referring completely to employees. But to take us out and not refer that we are somewhere else gives the impression, the misperception that we are not being held accountable.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add a little context, so it was mentioned in there, the board is, is a string of groups of individuals, but this policy is truly just for the employees. I would caution the board on adding additional statements like this, because once you start down this path, then you want to do it on the next policy where the board has a different policy or guidance in the board handbook. And, and then you get into a point where you're just continually trying to add it, add it, and add it, because the readers think that if it's not in there, then the board doesn't do it. So in the long run, it is, it can cause some issues on keeping the content separate and just directing people where they need to go if there are questions. But it's like we don't announce that we're going to be open when it snows, because as soon as we announce that we're going to be open when it snows, the next time it snows, they expect us to announce that we're going to be open. And if we don't announce it, then they assume that we're going to be closed. So it's that similar analogy. So the board, absolutely board decision, but want to add that additional context.
Well, this doesn't come up that often, but I think when it talks about conflict of interest, that there can be that perception, because somewhere down the road, someone can look at what was written and say, oh, they striked out the Board of Trustees and not knowing that we are covered under our handbook. So now, if you just add this statement in here, then people will know why we were removed from this particular policy. This rarely, this rarely comes up. And I might add too, that for those who don't know, we used to bring policies to the board for a first read. And then there would be a second read, and then we would vote on it. But Dr. Moser thought that was taking too long, so the board agreed that we would not have a first read and a second read, that this would be our time. And if you all didn't like something that was in here, that we would discuss it. So we've taken out a step, so I think it's important that we do take this time and, and discuss this. But I just think somewhere down the line, because it's taken out, because if I were a new employee and I was serving on one of these college committees and I saw this, how would I know that the college has it in a handbook? All I would see is that the, the Board of Trustees, who set the policies, have taken themselves out of the policy. And then you have that misperception, that concept of thinking, well, they're not policing themselves, they're policing us, but they're not policing themselves. I think just a statement, and you're done with it. New employees, community, everyone knows that we have our own form. So what does it hurt to add that statement?
It's interesting. I hadn't really thought through until hearing Dr. Moser's take on it too. But it just made me wonder then, and maybe this is the rabbit hole that Dr. Moser was talking about, then what other policies do we have that do mention trustees? And is that maybe a practice that we want to get away from? Because we shouldn't, I mean, I don't know that it would be enforceable against a trustee. Obviously, we have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to the college by nature of our position and oath, so I think there is accountability there. I wonder if maybe a blanket statement on the policy website, just saying these policies govern the college staff and administration and students. And then there's a separate site for how we govern ourselves as trustees. Is that maybe a path that we want to go down? Open for discussion on it.
I think, under purpose, adding this statement that Lorraine has crafted for us, because it's taken out. Any other policy, when we take something out, if it's housed somewhere else, we mention it. And there's not many policies I think that we are mentioned. And because conflict of interest is so much, if you look at what's happening on our national level, if you look at what's happening all around, where there seems to be less accountability for those who are elected, it's important that this statement is in here.
Yeah, we, we don't reference every single item that's taken out if it lives someplace else. So that's not, that's not our practice.
But if it's, if it's, if it's something that was in a policy and it was talking about students, and then we just referenced that it was in, that is under student policy, that's what I'm talking about. Now, can we have the trustees, any comments, concerns about that? Are you okay with us adding that statement under purpose? And to the committee, that's why when I mentioned it to Lorraine, I didn't try to move forward on it, because I thought it would be better just to bring it here and see, get the input from all the trustees, and then it's done. Versus pulling it out until the next meeting.
I don't want to stifle any conversations from other trustees. I'll open it back up in just a second. I guess my question is, so that, back to the purpose then of the policy committee is to vet these and bring us a recommendation. Did you, are, did the three-person body vote and bring it to us with the amendment or without it?
Well, this, this happened afterward, you know, with me still thinking about it. But we don't act, we don't give a count vote, but we agree. You've been in there. We agree.
Okay.
And so when I thought about it more, I, I'll just say this. When my sixth sense kicked in about something, I think I have to follow through on it. And so that's when I emailed Lorraine, along with the president and the trustees who are on the policy committee, that I think because that's being taken out, that we need to really address it and let employees, employees know and the community that we are housed somewhere else, because it's taken out.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So if there's no objection to it, I think the, the way the policy, the purpose reads, and then after that, right after that, add this statement, "Members of the Board of Trustees are also subject to guidelines related to conflict of interest as outlined in the Board of Trustees Handbook." If there's no objection, I will move on to the, to the third one. And that is the temporary interim employee status. Is there any concerns about that one? I might add, there was, excuse me, I didn't mention it, because we don't really vote on this, but the HR, Lorraine, included an annual conflict of interest disclosure form, so you would see what kind of form they would be filling out. But back to this one, I just wanted to add that. But to the last one that we're looking at, temporary interim employee status. Any concerns about that one?
Looks short and straightforward to me.
Okay.
So if that concludes the explanation of the policies before us, then I would ask if there is any other discussion from the board. And after that, I would call for a motion to approve the policies. And if you would, please specify if you are moving to approve with or without the suggested amendment.
I move we approve with the suggested amendment.
Approve with the adjusted amendment?
What?
Alright, so, oh, you're just, oh, okay, I thought you...
Did she make a motion?
No, I moved, and then we need a second.
I believe we have a motion, so Trustee Hoskin Sutton would be a second then. So we have a motion and a second to approve the policies as presented with the amendment to the Policy on Conflict of Interest to include a statement under the Purpose Section, including that trustees' conflict of interest matters are handled within the trustee handbook. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, Lorraine drafted the statement, so she knows the exact wording. Thank you.
Trustee Gilstrap?
Was there an amendment on the, the first one, the web content and editing? Is there two amendments or one amendment?
Two, thank you. The other one is the, is the change in it from revision approval to board updated. So that is consistent. Yes, you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, good catch. So revised, revised motion. I move that we approve with the amendment on the first policy, which is the web content editing policy 1.00, as well as an amendment to the conflict of interest policy 4.15.
We have a motion. Do you second again, Trustee Sutton?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Return back to the chair.
That brings us to the presentation of the new program submission, Surveying Technology Certificate A, presented by Mr. Jerry Pope, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Thank you. I forgot to print this out earlier. So we are proposing a Certificate A in surveying technology. This is a direct result of discussions with the Advisory Board. This Kansas statute, which is referenced, or maybe it's not a statute, but whatever the guideline, the administrative regulations state that after 15 credit hours and a certain amount of time in a, in a different job that's, you know, that's related, the students can sit for the surveying licensure exam. And so after discussion with the Advisory Board, they decided to add trigonometry. And so that's that additional third hour, so it is an 18-hour certificate, which of course means it's eligible for financial aid. We have adjuncts in this, in this department that are actually meeting the students in different places in Kansas. So there are, most of the program is online, but there are some, and I don't know all the subtleties, but there are some things that they do in person. But at this point, those adjuncts work elsewhere, and so they honestly drive all over the state to meet those students to do that, because there is a huge need for these programs, for this program in particular. So this, this came out of an advisory group meeting based on information and recommendations. And now students can take our certificate, and they can, with the right amount of experience, they can sit for those exams.
So are we already offering this?
No, we have a Certificate B, and so we're adding an A to this. And these courses do count for Certificate Bs, so it builds on for Certificate B. And we may decide whether we really need a Certificate B, but we do have the AAS. So at this point, we have a Cert B, and we have an AAS, and now we're adding this 16-credit hour. We're pulling out those courses to create a Certificate A.
Okay. Well, this is where I have some, some questions. I, I noticed in reading about it, it said that the estimated median income was $61,100 with a bachelor's degree. Can we, do we have an idea of what it would be for a certificate? Or is this $61,000 referring, that's what you make with the certificate?
So as I understand it, the Kansas Society of Land Surveyors are experiencing such a low number with the retirees that are expected in the, the near future, that that particular bachelor's degree requirement was, I don't know that it was a statutory requirement or these administrative regulation requirements, but it was a widely-held requirement. And those students can get our certificate, and if they sit and pass the exam, which of course, we hope they do if they take our program, then they are eligible for that salary.
Okay. How, how will students know about this program? Do we have a waiting list? Do they get together as a cohort here? Or, I know you said that it's online, but...
So we market it as we normally market, and I know Kansas Society of Land Surveyors also markets that program. With this new cert, and I apologize for not having the exact numbers, but we do have more students than we've ever had enrolled in this program. And one thing I think I, I don't know if I reported it to this group, but our trigonometry enrollment is, has skyrocketed because of this, this requirement. And of course, I want to remind you that that was a request of the Advisory Board to have that math class.
Yes, and I had a question about the trigonometry too. It says that there's a prerequisite requirement of college algebra, and it says college algebra or college algebra with a review. So what's, what's the difference in that? I mean, is it...
Ed, do you, can you just speak to the difference? Ed, I think, could speak a little bit more to the college algebra prerequisite to trigonometry.
Yeah, it says college algebra or college algebra with review.
Currently, we have a college algebra with review course, which is Math 105, which is just kind of a support course. So it's still college algebra, but it meets for five credit hours instead of three. So that's to prepare students if they can't, if, if they're not ready for college algebra alone or don't feel they are.
Okay.
This is part of the new state mandate, that there will be no standalone developmental education courses. So this is taking the algebra class and offering what was in the developmental education course at the same time. And that expedites the students' time to completion.
And that expedites the students' time to completion and they believe therefore success. Even though that's not always proven accurate, that's what the state is requiring for developmental education. Now, it has to be paired with a college credit-bearing course. And having this online and with the, with the certificate really increases our opportunity to expand and grow this program significantly. And we're also looking at what the other states around us require because if it's online and then they just do some FaceTime with a civil engineer or land surveyor and they, they sit for the same test as the bachelor's student. So, it's very similar to, an ADN sits for the same RN test that a BSN sits for. So, they pass the same test. So, this will put people into the surveying industry much faster. And we're the only one that is doing this. Everyone else has closed out their program because they couldn't make program numbers meet. By doing this online, we expand our reach to the entire state and beyond.
Okay. Thank you. I'll continue with my question. That was part of one. Was, was it offered anywhere else? And will we, will we be tracking, like with the other programs, you come back and you tell us with whether it's nursing or the physical therapy assistant program, you tell us the pass/fail rate? So, that would be good, if we could get that information. And you, I'm, one of my other questions was, was it full-time faculty or adjunct? But it's going to be all adjunct teaching this?
Yes, at this time, it's adjunct faculty.
And then is it...
Yeah.
One more question. I know most of our things have a course fee. Will this have a course fee?
Ooh, I, well, this is a program, this is not a course. Yeah, I don't know whether those individual surveying courses have course fees. I can't remember.
I know it's a program, but within there, like the survey, that they have to buy some type of instrument for that's, so that would still be a course fee.
Those are handled at the course level. This is not their approval of courses. This is approval for a certificate that has pre-existing courses. So, we don't include that information because it's not part of the request.
Okay, well, it was just, it was a question, you know, is there a course fee attached? So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve? I'm sorry, was there a question? No. Do we have a motion to approve the submission for the new program, please?
So moved.
What? Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. If there are no other comments from the board, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good evening.